Okay, it's 5 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started, maybe some more will join us, I don't know. But let's begin with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance, if you all don't mind.
Dear Lord, we just come to you tonight and we just pray specifically about the subject of health insurance and the benefits for the employees of Titus County. And, Lord, you know that the challenges we face are real and you know that the needs of employees are real. We just pray that you'll help us reach an appropriate balance so that we can continue to provide the very best that we can for our employees and at the same time be prudent with the monies that we are provided for by taxpayers in this community. We turn this meeting over to you, Father, just as questions can be answered, that resolutions can be reached and that understanding will be made clear. We ask you in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I've made about 50 copies of what is at this point, nothing more than a proposal. Hopefully each of you have gotten a copy of that. Again, nothing has been voted on by the court at this point. This concept was just discussed for the first time last Thursday when we met with CAPS Insurance, our consultants. So it is not necessarily in final form, it is for a discussion tonight and it's a working document. Our insurance consultants, CAPS Insurance, honestly gets the credit for suggesting this as a possible way to deal with insurance, and I mean that sincerely, I appreciate it and I think it was a good idea. And it'll be our job to fill in the details as to whether or not we make this work and how we get it to work. We're running about 32% higher in our health claims this year than last year, a pretty hefty increase. One year ago, we raised the monthly amount that we contribute to our self-funded insurance plan from about, from 750 per person up to $850 per person. So we took that hike last year. We're currently running over $1,000 in actual cost on a per-employee basis. That means total claims divided by total employees and we're running behind what we had agreed to book each year on behalf of each employee. We're running behind. When the actual costs are 1,000 and we've only set aside 850, you see what the gap is there. We often think of our health insurance as simply making a monthly premium that we send off to an insurance company like Blue Cross or Aetna. But just as a reminder, Titus County, on the other hand, is a self-funded plan. And this means instead of paying that insurance company, we put that $850 on behalf of each employee each month into one special account. And that pool of money is used to pay the claims of our employees. We use UMR as our administrator to handle all of those claims. But they only handle claims according to the terms that the commissioner's court establishes. They don't take liberties on their own to deny someone or approve someone, it is simply based on the plan. And when that plan is deemed to be unfair by someone, we simply blame an insurance company. Well, no, that's not really accurate, we need to be blaming this commissioner's court. If we've designed a plan one way and it doesn't work out the way that we intend, as it has in the past, we have made some adjustments and will continue to do so. But anyway, we use UMR as the administrator who helps us pay those claims out, whether it goes to you as an individual, or whether it goes to a doctor, or whether it goes to a pharmacy. No one up here at this bench likes having to deal with the problems that we're facing. And we understand that even a slight increase in your insurance cost or a decrease in the level of your benefits has a negative effect on your personal finances. As always, we're looking for the best possible solution to control county expenses and be as reasonable as we can with taxpayer money. We also, and I want to emphasize this, we want to provide the very best compensation and benefits package that we can for our valuable employees. The cost of healthcare is rising at an incredible rate and our situation is not unique here in Titus County. Companies and municipalities all over the state are facing this and have been facing this for years. Compensation increases oftentimes do not keep up with insurance cost increases. This two-tiered suggestion attempts to keep the cost of your insurance to a minimum with the base plan. The employee premium remains at zero, meaning it doesn't cost an employee only any additional money in the form of a monthly contribution. The level of dependent coverage does increase slightly, but it only goes to the level that we established a couple of years ago when we agreed to start developing an annual increase in the amount that you paid to cover your wife, children, spouse, both. The primary changes in this base plan are a reduction in benefits. And one would be the deductible goes from 850 up to 1,500. The annual out-of-pocket maximum goes from 4,000 to $6,550. The annual family maximum out-of-pocket goes up as well. And then the office visit co-pay, which is what most of us experience on a day-to-day basis, goes from 25 to $40. Non-genetic drug cost, non-genetic increases slightly, generic stays at $5. Emergency room visits increase from $100 to $200 for a genuine emergency. And a non-genuine emergency room visit, that we still have an occasional use of, that will get tagged pretty hard because it will become part of your deductible and your co-insurance if the procedure that you end up using the emergency room for is determined to be non-emergency. For anyone that feels like they need to have the benefits of what I'll call the buy-up plan, or the more premium plan. This maintains most of our current benefits and price points, but as an individual employee would pay $100 a month for this employee-only coverage and then see some significant increases to dependent coverage. Dependent coverage has been underpriced for years. We've not kept up with that cost as we should because we've not wanted to force those increasing costs on our employees during years of little or no raises. Perhaps our insurance costs will slow down or even revert to the level of the better years we've had in the past, we just don't know, and nobody in this room knows. But to allow these costs to continue to rise without some form of a containment plan would be irresponsible on our part. At this time, I'd like for any commissioner that wants to say something to voice their comments. I'll open up the floor for comment after that. Based on the number of people here, I think we can go, I suggested two minutes, we can probably go to three minutes for anyone that wants to make comments. After public comment, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for final comments and see if they want to take any action tonight. We do have a 6 o'clock public budget hearing tonight. We've got to maintain that schedule, so we'll have some more arriving for that 6 o'clock meeting. If we don't get finished with this, we'll go into our budget hearing and we'll come back and finish this if you all would like to stick around long enough. So at this time, I won't call on any particular commissioner, but I'll just open it up if you would like to voice comment.
I'd just like to say, Judge, that I don't like increasing insurance in any rate, any shape or any form. But when CAPS brought this two-tiered plan up, I thought that'd give everybody an opportunity to choose which one they wanted. So, but I don't like to raise insurance or even pay any more insurance than what it... So, I fought it for years, but... That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I looked at this, we've had, what was our last year, Carl, on our insurance? We came out a plus, didn't we? About breakeven? Okay, we hadn't finished this year, it goes through December, correct? We go through December. What we're looking at is nine months. You know, I looked at this, and I looked at the two different plans. There's good parts about it, there's bad parts. I personally would like to stay with one plan for everybody. We got the $1,500 deductible, or deductible for the individual. We went up a little bit last year, that's what I thought we were going to do this year, but it went from 850 to 1,500. I'd rather stay at nine, go to 900, go up just like we planned. Then 1,800 for the family deductibles. Then the annual max out-of-pocket is 4,000 for the individual and then 8,000 for the The percentage is 80%, we used to be at 90, now we're at 80. That has helped some. Office visit, I'd rather keep it at 25. The teledoc, I think this is something we can use more and more, we just got to get used to it. We've never really done it before, I have not. And I think that would help. Instead of having to go to the doctor, if you, you know, you got a sinus infection, you know you got a sinus infection, you can do this, you got to do it ahead of time, program it in, get everything done. And instead of having to go to the doctor, they can call, they can get medicine, they can get antibiotics or anything like this, they will not do pain prescription deals. This is strictly for people that are sick. Of course, the urgent care, I would like to leave, do that at 60. Emergency care, I, you know, I don't have a problem with this, I think it's a little high, but I can live with the 200. But if you have an emergency, you need to go, you go, period, because we don't ever know. A lot of times, I know this year, we had some that went that were emergencies, that then others that had indigestion or something like that. But that's going to be something you have to call, not us. The generics, I'd like to leave it at five. Brandings, 25. Preferred brands, 50. Especially drugs, 150. Employees, and this is where you step up, I do not want to see any increase for employees, employees and children, goes up, I think, $20 from 280. Employee and spouse, 350, goes up $25. Employee and families, $400, that's a $30 increase. And then the monthly payroll, employee semi-monthly payroll deduction, zero, 150, 175, 200. That's what I would like to see happening. I think with nine months, we really, we have an outlook. We had six cases this year, had one employee, two spouses, and I think three children. And we normally don't have that many children, the counts that really went up. So that's not, I don't look for that to be a yearly thing. Most times, if you have one or two, that's probably about average. But personally, I would like to see it with the one plan for everybody. It must go up a little here and a little there till we get this year finished. You might have a better look at, outlook at it for next year, I don't know. But anyway, that's what I'd like to see happen.
So as I understand it, the only change you'd make is the annual deductible going from 750 up to 900 and then 1,800 for out-of-network, or for families, did you say family? Well, I'd love to be able to do that too, but unfortunately, that increase in the deductible, knowing that only a small percentage of our employees ever even hit the deductible, is not going to produce much in the way of cost savings. If you're willing to continue to pass these increases on, that would be a plan that would do it. That'll pass those costs on to the budget and ultimately to the taxpayer. But I respect and appreciate your point of view there, you've shared that with me and I understand how you feel.
Anyone else before I open up the floor?
Judge, I'd just like to say that, kind of like Phillip was saying, I don't like messing with insurance at all. I despise having to, having to fool with insurance. I told Steve the other day, I said, "This is nothing against you, but I hate insurance." This is something that I've looked at several different things since we met the other day. And my wife has got another job now and she's almost to the point to where she can take out the insurance there. And I have, we've sat down and figured it as to which way is the best for us to go. And it's something that we've got to make a decision on. I like the two different plans, that way, you know, if a person thinks they may need the upper plan, then, you know, they can take it. As far as the deductibles, they're still extremely low to what, even on the base plan at 1,500, is still extremely low to what most employees and all, or employers have That's my feelings on it, I just, I think that it's good to have the two plan, that way if somebody thinks they need the better one, then they're, they can get it.
Okay, any comments from our audience are welcome. Mr. Colley, come on up to the podium if you would, just so we can get your comments on our recording. Will you flip that on if it's not on?
I don't really have a comment, I was just wondering if you had some sort of, some, just general, what's the difference going to be in the two plans as far as what's covered and what's not covered?
Yeah, if you didn't get one of these when you came in, there's a, oh, what's covered and what's not covered? Essentially, the types of coverage are going to be the same, it's just how much of it is, you're held responsible for, or how much it costs you in the form of a premium. But there's not going to be any differentiation according to this proposal in whether a procedure is covered or not covered, or a drug is covered or not covered. Good question. And our, my hope anyway is that this base plan would be acceptable by 100% of our employees. I don't know of situations where somebody would feel that they would need to have that more expensive plan. Perhaps there are situations out there, somebody just wants to be conservative and they're scared of having that kind of a high deductible sneak up on them, but in order to maintain that, that's why the costs to the employee have gone up. But I certainly hope that the base plan will be acceptable by everyone. Anyone else, come on up.
Hey Judge.
Sir.
Either anyway, the doctor consider, and because I realize that you're handling some stuff with increasing costs, all of the things that right here, the monthly premium, hoping in one here for the rest, go up there and talk to them.
I'm sorry, show me where your points are.
Right here, go up on the prescription drug, just like you got it, just on the monthly premium, just leave it where they're issued with that, with a big consideration.
Well, if you look, the significant increases are on the buy-up plan. The increases to the dependents are really fairly minimal, if you'll note there. You've only got a $20 a month increase to cover children only. You've got only a $25 increase to cover a spouse. And to cover an entire family, you've only got a $30 increase. Those increases were voted on two years ago. We had a stair-step plan that we had approved two years ago, and so to change this would be going against what we set two years ago.
Well, you're right, them are minimal, that's why I was wondering if it'd be possible, since we're going up some of those deductible stuff, we do not need to force them.
The answer is anything is possible, you know, we're here to consider that. You know, Commissioner Fields has suggested not as much of an increase in the deductible. I mean, there's all kinds of different ways that you can tweak this, but knowing how few people actually hit that deductible, we're hoping that the increase in the deductible will generally be a minor impact across the board.
Well, the increase in the deductible, it, the people that use insurance pay that part, and I think that's what's very important, if I have to use it, then I pay the deductible. If I don't, then I don't. So I mean, that's why I was wondering, because that is minimal, I agree, that there's not a lot going on, that's why I was wondering, would it really hurt the plan dramatically if you went up on the deductibles and kept it all there except for just that, since it wasn't in?
Well, Chef, my personal feeling is this is where we've been so out of balance on our plan, is our dependent coverage. Our dependent coverage, if you look at our peers or at other companies, dependent coverage is significantly more expensive just about every place that I know of other than Titus County. To cover a family with these kind of benefits for $400 is still an amazing deal. And I'm proud of the fact that we can offer that, but also respect your idea of, you're trying to watch increases and make this more palatable any way that you can, and so that is certainly one suggestion, we can certainly consider that.
I'd like to start out by just thanking the court for allowing me the opportunity to speak on this issue. I feel very passionate about the issue of insurance benefits for employees. I feel like one of the main reasons people take a government job is increased benefits in lieu of pay. You as commissioners, I think, all need to realize, and you as the judge, all need to realize that one of your biggest assets are your employees. And they are your front line. The more, it's my personal belief, and I think that I can get the stats to back this up, the more you continue to cut pay and benefits, the more turnover you guys are going to have, the more retraining, and the more out of control this healthcare cost is going to be. There's some things that I could, that I'm not going to get into tonight, that I could probably say, but the fact is that I'm not only a county employee, I'm a citizen here. And we've had to endure some tax increases. And what I think it's time for you guys to do is sit down at this budget hearing and make some serious cuts at this budget hearing instead of cutting employees. As Commissioner, Commissioner Parker, you brought up a good fact. You know, the outside market pays a lot more. And a lot of these employees, when they started, they took the job thinking that the benefits outweighed the pay and they knew that. But, you know, and these proposed changes, that may be okay for someone that makes 70,000 a year. But for that employee that's sitting back here, that's making 20,000 to 40,000 a year, don't you think that cutting more, cutting more is a slap in the face to them? I would pose this question to you. What has this court done to cut budget items before reaching further into their employees' pockets? What have you done? These are, these are people that live in Titus County, shop and vote. I would encourage my commissioner to vote against any insurance change, and I would encourage all of you to work on real budget cuts. I think these are pennies you're talking about. Well, even if it's pennies, I think it's, I think the last place you need to be cutting is employee benefits. And if you're, if you've got to the point to where you need to cut employee benefits, it's serious time, come 6 o'clock, to cut a lot of other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. All right. Well, gentlemen, again, these are numbers are proposed on the handout that I gave you tonight as an action item, if you so choose. You heard at our meeting last Thursday that any changes we're going to make, we have a D-Day next Monday night, we've got to make these changes so that CAPS and UMR can implement these changes into the plan and be ready for our meetings with individual employees that will start on the 19th of October. So we're just a few weeks away from that, and it takes time to get all the materials changed. But open enrollment, being so close, we've got to make decisions quickly. So I gave you this meeting tonight, and of course, you've got next Monday night's commissioner's court. So therefore, I'll ask you what you want to do, either specifically to this proposed plan, do you want to think about it another week? What would you like to do, if anything, tonight? Commissioner Parker, you need any additional time to think? Do you think you're prepared to make a decision this evening?
I'd really like to think about it a little longer, Judge.
Commissioner Hinton, what about yourself?
Think about it, Judge.
Do you, would you like for me to put this on the agenda and be prepared a week from today at the 9 o'clock AM meeting on the 26th? Could you be prepared by then?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Fields, how about yourself?
Judge, I'd like to have a little more time. I've talked to quite a few people, but I still, some have not been. But I, what I told you a while ago, let me, just looking at it, because I think from what I remember... what I remember, Steve, you may correct me on this, didn't we have, out of all our people, which is, what, around 200, we had 21 that met the deductible? Seems like I've heard that number.
I think that was, those were figures from a year ago, as I recall.
From a year ago. Okay. I would be, what I told you, I would mine, I would go to 1,000, and then 1,000. That's $200 increase from, well, $150 increase to $850 to $950, or 900.
But you're talking about only one plan?
Yeah.
Eliminating the buy-up plan and having one, having one plan and specifically a $1,000 individual deductible?
And a 2,000.
And a 2,000 family deductible. Okay?
And then the rest of what I talked about, but I would like to stay with the one plan.
Do you want to put that in the, you're not putting that in the form of a motion for tonight? You're still saying you'd like to wait until next week? Or what would you like to do? Or do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I'd like to wait until next week, because I still got some people I'd like to talk to.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Riddle, what would you like to do?
I'd like to wait.
Somebody will make a motion. We'll table this until the 26th, next Monday. Motion is made by Commissioner Fields to table any action on making final decisions regarding our health insurance plan. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I think that's all we have for this 5:00 meeting. You're welcome to take copies of that with you. Our opportunity for employee comment will be much restricted next Monday because we'll have our meeting during the daytime. So, any comments you have, please call me. I've given you my cell phone and my email and my office number on the email that I sent out. Feel free to call me or any of these other guys. Anyone else have a comment before we bring this meeting to an end? Okay? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn as we take a break before our budget hearing.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Hinton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.